What's good everybody, how y'all doing man? Thank you for tuning in to Science with Sean this episode. A follow up from class from yesterday. Before we get started, I do wanna go ahead and do a couple of things. Like go ahead and get the disclosure on out of the way. Copyright disclaimer under section 107 of the Copyright Act of 1976 allows us to make fair use for purposes such as criticism, comment, news reporting, teaching, scholarship, or research fair uses are used for me to buy copyright statute that might otherwise be infringing. Yeah, man, let's get a video in before we go in. Hello everybody, how y'all doing man? Again, ETM Hotel, Renny Sean, welcome in peace. My name is Sean. I'd like to thank everybody for tuning in to Science with Sean. What's good with you? Teddy, what's going on with the business here? Man, make sure you pick up your copy of what SARS-CoV-2 taught me. The link should be in the description of the actual video. Please like the show, share the show. If the link is not in the description, of course, it'll be there in just a second. It'll be there in just a second. So I hope everybody having a good Friday. Or what have you. Let me get out of this and upload real quick. So we're just gonna follow up to yesterday's. Bill, we wanna continue to build on it. And I'm not gonna make it a long drawn out type of a thing. Zoom may add in the description in the videos. Alright, so yeah, the link is in the description now, you should be able to see it. Just to kinda recap. Just a little light recap. Yesterday, we began to talk about transcription and RNA processing. In that, we learned that. What did we learn? Had something to do with DNA. Only what can what? When you're dealing with it, only what can what? Let me give y'all a little time to think about that. Yesterday, what was the one thing that we needed to understand regarding DNA? Took his hoodie off. What was the one important thing, right? That we talked about? Let's see what y'all saying. Oh yeah, yeah, I'm always in the live. I'm always in the live. What up, what up? Zion, what's the answer to the question, man? What's the most important thing, you know what I'm saying? Regarding DNA. When you're dealing with transcription. Right? If DNA is broken, DNA can be repaired. Right? So if DNA is broken, DNA can be repaired. However. When you're dealing with transcription. You gotta have what? Yeah, there you go, double strand. I see Richard been in here trying to sneak in here. Learn something different, although you're unvaccinated. Throw that out there. Although you're unvaccinated, but yeah, double strand, that's what it is. So yeah, that's important. So pretty much we wanna kinda hinge the whole build on recognizing, you know, double stranded DNA templates for transcription. You know? Cause we can't get to what we need to get to unless we deal with what we need to deal with. So let me share my screen. And we can begin. And no, I don't expect a lot of people to show. We have a class, bro. We ain't, I ain't got time to argue with nobody. But y'all should remember this image right here and see transcription point. You see these different type of viruses over here? Right, retroviruses here. Parvovirus here, hepatitis B virus, adenoviruses, all these different viruses, right? They all go here and deal with double stranded DNA to make what? mRNA. So when I was saying what I was saying. We should be able to see this and follow the roadmap. All these different viruses. If they're single stranded or whatever. If they're broken, of course, they could fix themselves, but whatever transpires, all these different viruses. When they get to a point of transcription, in order to get to this point of mRNA, they gotta be double stranded. Some viral genomes are double stranded DNA molecules that can be transcribed as soon as they reach the nucleus. Transcription of specific genes is therefore the first biosynthetic reaction in cells infected by adenoviruses, herpes viruses, papillomares viruses, and polyomares viruses. Other viral DNA genomes must be converted from the form in which they entered the cell to double stranded molecules that serve as transcriptional templates. Viral DNA genomes that are partially or largely single stranded, such as those of Hepburn virus and parvoviruses respectively, are converted to fully double stranded DNA molecules by cellular enzymes. The prerequisite for expression of retroviral genetic information are more demanding. For the plus strand RNA genome must be both converted into viral DNA and integrated into cellular genome. Reverse transcription creates an appropriate double stranded DNA template that includes the signals needed for its recognition by components of the cellular transcriptional machinery. And what was the most important? Let me zoom out. What was the most important part of this slide right here? When it says in cells affected with DNA viruses, at least one protein, our gate, that's why often many are needed for DNA replication, but not all DNA templates are ready for transcription. When you see this right here, this one is ready for transcription. Double stranded going alright. Alright, and here. Some viral genomes must be converted to templates for transcription. This is basically everything that I just read. Right? You see this adenovirus here? Parvovirus here, retrovirus here. They all have to be converted to double stranded. Right? So repair takes place, cause this one is broken. Repair takes place, making it double stranded. Repair takes place, or synthesis takes place, double stranded. Retro, reverse transcription, integration, double stranded. Yesterday, we also mentioned something about promoter. Does anyone remember what a promoter is? That is, that is something important for us to know about promoter. And remember, which viral genomes do not need conversion? Anybody know the answer to that? Which viral genomes do not need conversion? I know it's a little delay, so I'mma wait a little bit. But which viral genomes do not need conversion? I know it'll take a minute. I will come back to it if you don't know the answer. Virals need their protein to make the capsid correct. What does, uh, what does exons need? Remember this, we talked about this too. Carry on, yep. We know the enzymes here, poly one, poly two, poly three. The cellular RNA, pre and primary, pre, primary. You got the SN and the LNC, we have all of that. Then we get the viral RNA, unknown, pre, primary, and all this stuff. Remember, these things right here are viruses. These names that you're saying at the beginning are viruses. That's why they come out of the viral RNA, those are viruses. Alright, only DNA viruses that replicate in the cytoplasm are the pox virus and the giant viruses encoded in the RNA of polyomeres. And we talked about transcribing and capping. There you go, Zion, what you talked about, transcriptions. And we talked about the exons, right? The exons was important here. What did he say about exons? Not the gas station, well, pretty much where the name come from. But what did he say about exons? Anybody remember? Man, look, I ain't expecting y'all to remember anything, man. We just kinda, it's a study group. This whole string right here is just part of our study group. So when we go back to class on Monday, we prepare. It's a study group. We can be wrong in the mug on this stream, but we can correct ourselves. We can get correction, we can get some straightening. Alright, so I don't see nobody answered it. Ha, 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 ha. Ha, 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 ha. Let's go back and deal with it real quick. Let's go back and deal with it. See, I didn't never remove the, uh, the string, right? I start right where we needed to. I'mma go back to him explaining it, just so everybody can be familiar.
The direction of the arrow indicates the direction of mRNA synthesis or transcription. Now, the transcription to make mRNA.
Hold on, let's slow it down. He says I'm, he says I'm important right here at the beginning of this.
Keynote, to keep the cursor on all the time. Duh. Alright. Let's take a look at the process of transcription. There at the top is your double stranded DNA. Blue is the plus strand, which is equivalent to mRNA, right? The light blue is the negative strand. And that red arrow is a promoter for transcription.
Now, remember, I asked y'all earlier what a promoter was, so I'mma go back and I'mma give you what a promoter is. Now, I know because I have, I actually have the biology book, I might have a leg up in the conversation. But I'm not trying to use it as a leg up to undermine anybody in the chat. Like I said, if, if we're taking this class and people that are taking the class with me, if several of y'all in the chat. We're gonna use this as an opportunity for us to come together and do this. I know Nuno, she got the books. But I think yesterday, Chavis, he dropped the link yesterday. And when he comes back, people who don't have it, I'mma make sure that he drops it again. It's an older version of the book, a different edition of the book, but some of the information is similar in the book. And we can correct what needs to be corrected. So in the very top line in this particular slide. The very top line in this particular slide. This is our double stranded DNA. Here it is. The top part is our plus, the darker blue, the lighter blue is our negative. So he said, this is what? What did he say this arrow is right here? Let's go back, let's see what he say.
All the time. Alright. Let's take a look at the process of transcription. There at the top is your double stranded DNA.
Got it?
Blue is the plus strand, which is equivalent to mRNA, right? The light blue is the negative strand. And that red arrow is a promoter.
Bam, Richard got it. The red arrow is the promoter. Now, we're about to find out what the promoter is for. So for anyone who missed the stream yesterday and just kinda tuning in and kinda just vibing out with us and, you know, interested in being geeks and things of that nature. Transcription by RNA polymers two is what we're looking at. Accurate initiation of transcript by RNA polymers two is directed by a specific DNA sequence located near the initiation site called promoter. The promoter and the additional DNA sequence that governs transcription make up the transcriptional control region. These sequences of DNA viruses and retroviruses were among the first to be examined experimentally. For the human adenovirus type two major late promoter was the first from which accurate initiation of transcription was reconstituted in vitro. Subsequently, the study of viral transcription yielded fundamental information about the mechanism by which RNA polymers two transcription is initiated and regulated. So, real quick, cause he's going to explain this, but I wanna throw this in there for everybody. The site of initiation, which is the plus one, is represented by the jointed red arrow drawn in direction of transcription of the non-transcribed DNA strand. A convention used throughout this text. The core promoter, which is that red arrow, comprises the minimum sequence necessary to specify accurate initiation of transcription. The TATA, which we'll get into later, sequence is the binding site for TF2D. And the initiator is a sequence sufficient to specify initiation at a unique site. The activity of the core promoter, the red arrow. The core promoter is modulated by local regulatory sequences typically found within a few hundred base pairs of initiation site. The local, the location of the sequences upstream of the TATA sequence is shown is common. But such sequences can also lie downstream of the initiation site. Distant regulatory sequences that stimulate enhancers or repress silencers transcription are present in a large number of transcriptional control regions.
For transcription. It's another word that we will look at in a moment. A promoter is where transcription begins. And we usually show it as a red arrow. And the direction of the arrow indicates the direction of mRNA synthesis or transcription. Now, the transcription to make mRNA, which is plus stranded, the polymerase is gonna copy the minus strand, right? It's not gonna copy the plus strand, because that would give it a negative sense mRNA. That wouldn't work, wouldn't be translated. So even though the top strand is the same sense as mRNA, it's not copied, the minus strand is copied. So the enzyme pull to binds to the template, initiates synthesis at the promoter. We'll look at that process in some detail in a moment. And then it starts to make an mRNA shown in the light green there. And for the, by the way, for those of you that have questions, we're gonna hit a pause. You know, we have a little quiz question and I'll get to them. I'll get to all of them, so be patient. Don't be mad at me, I'm here for you. So we make a little bit of mRNA and then that mRNA is capped. A cap group is put on, shown here is M7GPPPMP. And it's in a little blue box, that's our convention for a cap. We talked about caps last time, because influenza virus polymerase steals them from the host cell. And exactly what they are, I will show you in a moment. And then eventually, the polymerase makes the entire pre mRNA. You know, it doesn't have to be the whole genome, it could be part of the genome. There are usually termination signals for it to stop. But it's a precursor for the most part. The, you know, most MRNAs are further processed. And we're gonna talk about that today. So there are sequences that are removed. And they're called introns. I like that word too, intron, was made up intervening sequence. It's a pink, it's, it's removed. And then what are left are the green sequences that code for protein, which are called exons. Not two X's, just one. You know, it's different from the gas company. In fact, this was named exon.
The exon's code for protein. The exon's code for protein. Again, the exon's code for what? Protein. That's pretty much the answer to the question that I was asking earlier. So let's go back and hit that one more time. Cause we need to make sure that we on our game. But real quick, real quick though, before we go back. If we go back to this slide, he's explaining these things in this form. From originally that. But if you broke this down into small instances where things could work itself out, all of this stuff start coming together. At some point, we're going to be able to look at a virus, recognize a virus. And deal with what we need to deal with. Uh oh. I think Sue taken woke up. Alright, so let's go, let's go, let's go.
It's the plus strand, which is a quick, I was losing my cursor. I woke up at 4:00 AM and I, and I had a haha moment. These things bug me all night. You know, sometimes I lose my cursor. Turns out there's a setting in keynote to keep the cursor on all the time. Duh. Alright. Let's take a look at the process of transcription. There at the top is your double stranded DNA. Blue is the plus strand, which is equivalent to mRNA, right? The light blue is the negative strand. And that red arrow is a promoter for transcription. It's another word that we will look at in a moment. A promoter is where transcription begins. And we usually show it as a red arrow. And the, the direction of the arrow indicates the direction of mRNA synthesis or transcription. Now, the transcription to make mRNA, which is plus stranded, the polymerase is gonna copy the minus strand, right? It's not gonna copy the plus strand, because that would give it a negative sense mRNA. That wouldn't work, wouldn't be translated. So even though the top strand is the same sense as mRNA, it's not copied, the minus strand is copied. So the enzyme pull to binds to the template, initiates synthesis at the promoter. We'll look at that process in some detail in a moment. And then it starts to make an mRNA shown in the light green there. And for the, by the way, for those of you that have questions, we're gonna hit a pause. You know, we have a little quiz question and I'll get to them. I'll get to all of them, so be patient. Don't be mad at me, I'm here for you. So we make a little bit of mRNA and then that mRNA is capped. A cap group is put on, shown here is M7GPPPMP. And it's in a little blue box, that's our convention for a cap. We talked about caps last time, because influenza virus polymerase steals them from the host cell. And exactly what they are, I will show you in a moment. And then eventually, the polymerase makes the entire pre mRNA. You know, it doesn't have to be the whole genome, it could be part of the genome. There are usually termination signals for it to stop. But it's a precursor for the most part. The, you know, most MRNAs are further processed. And we're gonna talk about that today. So there are sequences that are removed. And they're called introns. I like that word too, intron, was made up intervening sequence. It's a pink, it's, it's removed. And then what are left are the green sequences that code for protein, which are called exons. Not two X's, just one. You know, it's different from the gas company. In fact, this was named exon before SO became exon. When I was a kid, all the gas stations were SO. And then suddenly they changed and I got very upset. I didn't understand why they changed. But then when I went to Europe as a kid, they were still SO. It was funny. Anyway, exons are the parts of the mRNA that code for protein. Introns don't, they're removed by a process called splicing, which we will talk about today. And the other, so that's one of the processing steps of pre mRNA. The other is that the pre mRNA is usually cut or cleaved. So I will use the word cleavage to mean cutting. Cleavage in biochemistry means cutting at either a protein or an RNA. Okay? And that's what I mean. So this RNA is cleaved and then poly A is actually added to it. And we'll talk about how that happens. And then the, the intron is removed by a process of splicing, which we'll talk about. And only then is, do we have an mRNA. That's an mRNA, everything else is a pre mRNA technically. So then that mRNA needs to be exported out of the nucleus into the cytoplasm, because in the cytoplasm is where protein synthesis happens. The ribosomes will bind to it and it will be translated into protein. And in fact, as you'll see today, splicing is needed for export. Splicing marks MRNAs for export. And then finally, when they get out in the cell, they're translated and eventually degraded. Now, MRNAs do not last forever. Unlike something to do with love, right? Herpes lasts forever, but love and MRNAs do not last forever. And how long they last depends on the function of the protein. So some MRNAs last minutes, some last hours, some can last days. And the degradation of MRNAs is controlled by sequences in the five and three prime non-coding regions of the mRNA. Now, some viral genomes are made by transcription in the nucleus and they have introns. But the introns are removed to make MRNAs for protein synthesis. But the viral genome actually need to have the intron in it. So some viral genomes are actually exported without being spliced. And you may say, wait a minute, wait a minute. You just told me that splicing marks an mRNA for export. Yeah, I did. Yeah, I did. Most of the time, but some viral genomes and some cellular MRNAs can get out without splicing. In, in a special way that we will talk about. In biology, pretty much there are always exceptions. You know, you know, when pirates of the Caribbean, they said, it's not really a rule. It's more of a guideline, right? Biology is a guideline. There are very few rules, you know, we thought those DNA goes to RNA to protein. We thought that was a rule. And then reverse transcriptase showed us that RNA can go back to DNA. So they're more or less guidelines. Alright, that's the overall scheme. Let's talk about transcription now. Transcription is regulated very much so. It's in fact, the way we make sure the right proteins are made in the right place at the right time. You don't want all genes transcribed and translated. You, you don't need it. Think of cells that are not dividing muscle cells or, or neurons and most cells in your body, in fact, are not dividing. They don't need to have all the proteins that are involved in, in cell division, right? Not necessary. So they're turned off at the level of transcription. And the promoter in proximal sequences are involved in regulating transcription. So this is the anatomy of what we call a transcriptional control region. This is a DNA molecule with the dark and the light blue, and I have put different colors. To indicate the different elements that are involved in the regulation of transcription. So here's our promoter. In a red arrow. Start site, I, I should say, it's really the start site of transcription. The promoter actually surrounds it as you can see. So that would be plus one of the mRNA there. But in fact, it's in the middle of what's shown in yellow here, an initiator sequence. Which is a short sequence that is needed for accurate starts of the mRNA. And then a little bit upstream is a Tata sequence. Uh, which is a series of Ts and As, as you might guess from the name. And this particular sequence binds one of many proteins that are needed to regulate transcription. This protein is called TF two T. TF means transcription factor. Two D was the order in which it was discovered.
Alright, so he broke down the two things that I mentioned a second ago. So Tata is the what? Let's go over it. So core promoters of viral and cellular genes contain all the information necessary for recognition of the site of initiation. And assembly of precisely organized pre-initiation complexes. These assemblies contain RNA polymers two. And a common set of general initiation proteins required for accurate and precise initiation. A hallmark of many core RNA polymers to promoters is the presence of a top rich. Tata sequence twenty to thirty-five BP upstream of the site of initiation. Which is recognized by the Tata binding protein TB P. Short sequences termed initiators. Which specify accurate but insufficient initiation of transcription. In the absence of any other promoter sequences are also commonly found. So the TA is basically the sequencing recognition. As he said, he gave it a real short, direct explanation. And the book is not even given a broad explanation. It is talking about the, the pattern. It's going TA TA. Now, the T, the Tata or initiator sequences of the different promoters are not identical in DNA sequence. In the case of the simian virus forty, SV forty late transcription unit. Each of the sites of initiation is included within a DNA sequence resembling those initiators. The relative frequencies with which different initiation sites is a single promoter or used are indicated by the thickness. Of the red arrows, AD two or adenovirus type two. So if you see a thickness of the red arrows, it's an indicator. Alright, of relative frequencies in which different initiation sites in a single promoter are used.
And these two sequences, the Tata sequence and the initiator. Constitute what we call the core promoter. You can, for many genes, you can take this sequence alone and put it somewhere else. And it will, it will specify transcription. It will not be regulated. Because it doesn't have all the regulatory elements. But it will specify transcription. Let me unplug and unplug something so this doesn't flash anymore. Hold on. That's a problem. I think the problem is that the HDMI cable is plugged into a dongle. And I, you know, the, the Mac only has one HDMI port. I have to get around there. Maybe I should plug the. Yeah, the, the, the streamer into the Mac directly and plug my monitor into the dongle. Alright, so now we have the, the core promoter. Then upstream, there are additional sequences. So the, this core promoter is twenty to thirty-five base pairs in length. It's pretty short. And then we have low, what are called local regulatory sequences. Uh, typically a hundred to five hundred bases in length. And, and these bind different cell proteins that regulate transcription. There are many, many different proteins and, and they bind specifically to sequences. So these are specific DNA sequences, each of which binds a different protein. No, I don't have a computer virus, but it's a good idea in a course like this. So the, the green binds one specific protein, the, the brown another, the orange another, alright, those. And I'm not going to go into the details of, you know, which proteins regulate which kinds of. Transcription, it's just too much for this course, but. You will see some examples of this as we go by. So this, this whole region now, the core and the local regulatory sequences, these is, this is the promoter. This is the promoter per se. And then finally, we can have distant regulatory sequences. And these can be anywhere from, you know, a hundred to ten thousand bases away, actually. And they can still regulate activity at this promoter. And when, uh, that happened.
So he just showed you where the distant regulatory sequences are. And then where the long regulatory sequences are. And then of course, where the core promoter is. The air, the red arrow is always an indicator of. What the promoter, but what is the core promoter? The core promoter again is a viral and cellular gene containing all information necessary for recognition of the site of initiation. And assembly of precisely organized pre-initiation complexes. So we see the initiator, which is what he says, short sequences termed initiators. So the short sequences, those are initiators. Which specify accurate but insufficient initiation of transcription in the absence of any other promoter sequences. Are also commonly found. Now, let him continue.
But we'll see how that happens in a moment. So you have local promoter and its regulatory sequences. And you have distal and sequences and they're called enhancers and silencers. These distal regulatory sequences, they're shown in purple here. The enhancers enhance transcription and of course the silencers silence it, right? So here are some examples of regulatory sequences in transcriptional control regions of three different. Promoters. At the top, we have the adenovirus type two major late promoter. Now adenovirus has come in many, what we call serotypes, right? Serotype is, is a definition and immunological definition. One serotype, if you're infected with it, we will make antibodies, will not protect you against infection with another serotype. So adenovirus two. Will not, and antibodies against that two will not protect you against infection with that five, for example. So this is one of the many promoters of adenovirus. You're going to see more of them today. The, uh, slides coming up. Amazing arrangement. So here we have the, the transcription initiation site, the red arrow. Then there's our, um, sequence, the, the, the yellow sequence that specifies accurate initiation. I call that the initiator sequence, right? And then there's our Tata box upstream.
Remember initiator sequence, Tata box, initiation sequence, Tata box. Initiation sequence, Tata box, promoter. Double stranded DNA. Plus, minus, promoter. Initiator, Tata. Promoter, double stranded, plus, minus, initiator, Tata.
Dream in green. And then we have more further upstream to binding sites for two cell proteins called USF one and CPF. You don't have to know what these are, but USF stands for upstream factor. It's a creative name and CPF is actually cleavage and polyadenylation factor. Now, a, a, a word here about the word factor. I hate it. It was used before we understood that these were proteins. Now that we know that they're proteins, I think we should call them proteins, the factors. But people persist and the names are stuck. So this is one of my pet peeves. If you don't know what it is that's regulated, yeah, call it a factor because it could be nucleic acid or protein or something else. So that's add to major late. Then we have the SV forty early protein. This actually has a few transcription initiation sites. There's no, uh, there is no initiator sequence. Oh, we're blinking again. So I didn't solve the problem. Uh, maybe I'll swap the HDMI's at the break. They'll live dangerously. Uh, it has a Tata sequence and then it has many copies of the binding site for SPL. Another protein that regulates transcription. At the bottom. Another adenovirus type two promoter, the adenovirus E two early promoter. E two is a region of the genome, which you'll learn more about today and Monday. We have multiple transcription start sites. We have a Tata sequence. And then we have, uh, sites for E two F and ATF. Again, these are all different proteins that bind DNA sequences specifically. And here's a scale for you. This is about a hundred base pairs here.
Alright, so again, we know all of these is proteins, right? All of these highlight, we, we're dealing with proteins. But again, initiator, Tata, promoter. Double stranded DNA, plus, minus, right? And then he talks about the different proteins here for the SV forty early. And then he mentions the, uh, he says, we don't really need to know the CPF and USF. Right? But we can recognize that those are just basically proteins. Different kind of proteins. You got ups, uh, upscale and then you have what? I mean, if somebody asked us what they are, uh, but I don't think that anyone would ask us exactly what they are. We're learning, right? So we just say. What we want to say. Be truthful. Tell them you don't know. You know, it's a protein, but it's, it's representing protein, but whatever. Or you can be specific and go back and say exactly what the video says to them. They're not going to know what it is, is when you give them answers. However. You, when you see this, you can explain this to someone like, hey, look, what we're looking at is a, what, what we're looking at right here is. Looking at DNA right here. We're looking at DNA. Alright, this is, uh, of a virus. We're looking at basically pretty much the initiator here. This is the promoter here, right? This is. The Tata, right? This is your, this is your plus, this is your minus DNA. There you go, your double string. You're good. You should be able to recognize that. What's happening here is he's building us up to. Something else is about to come down the line. Regarding binding proteins. And us being able to. Understand idiosyncratic nomenclature for sequence specific DNA binding proteins that regulate transcriptions. Remember, this whole thing is about transcriptions. And get y'all a copy of what SARS-CoV-2 taught me. It ain't like this, no. But once you understand what viruses are and how they enter the cell. And how, and how certain viruses have to, when they get to the nucleus of the cell, right? The nucleus area which, which we talked about yesterday. It has to be double stranded, right? It'll fix itself. It'll bind itself pretty much, if you want to use that word. It's going to be double stranded when it get into that area. And it gets to looking like these different viruses. Remember, this is, this is adenovirus two major late. This is adenovirus two E two early. This is a SV forty virus early. So we're looking at two viruses, late and early. In the adenovirus and then we're looking at a SV virus. And you can see all these promoters right here. This one has one, this one has three, this one's got four. And then look, the yellow shifts away. I don't know what we're going to call this, but let's see.
So that's what these promoter regions look like. Now, how does transcription occur? The, um, process is shown here, just so that you get an overview. I'm not going to go into this in great detail, but here's our DNA at the top, right?
Alright, so if you have the fifth edition, Anusha, if you're following along. You gotta go back to page two oh three to get to the diagram that he's speaking in reference to right here. It is minus this. It has every bit of this, it is minus this image here. What we see here are double stranded DNA. What do we see here? Our promoter here. Alright, and now he's, we should be able to walk through. Weirdly, but we're going to walk through the initiation of transcription by RNA poll.
There in yellow is our promoter, which we've defined as having certain sequences in it. There's our mRNA start site. And here, here's what has to happen to get mRNA. This big brown protein here is RNA polymerase two. And these things on the left are all the initiation proteins that are needed to make mRNA. You don't just need the polymerase, you need a lot of other things. And they include TF two D, which is the protein that binds that Tata box sequence and a whole lot of other proteins. This, these all assemble at the promoter. And form what we call the core polymerase. So that is what's going to be enzymatically active. You need all those proteins to do, to make mRNA. But as they assemble initially, it's a closed initiation complex. It, it can't do anything. It just sits there until. A step to make it an open complex, which involves confirmational changes that are energy dependent. They are accompanied by the hydrolysis of ATP, which of course keeps us energy. So now the, uh, polymerase can start polymerizing. It can copy the DNA and make mRNA. And of course, that uses NTPs, uh, which it puts into the enzyme and takes off two phosphates to catalyze synthesis of mRNA. Now, this, uh, transcription process i- is initially shaky. And, and the enzyme makes what are called abortive transcripts. Uh, which means the enzyme goes twenty or thirty bases and it stops and the transcript falls off its junk. Until finally the enzyme gets going and it starts to make long mRNA. And why that happens is not clear. Uh, some people think it's because there's no primer and it's hard for the enzyme to get a grip on the template and get going. Uh, so nevertheless, after a while, the, the enzyme does get going. And it makes capped precursors, it makes capped precursors to mRNA. Alright, now here on the right is a, uh, figure that actually we just used yesterday on yesterday's TWIV. It was, we talked about how remdesivir works. But, but we use the DNA dependent RNA polymerase instead of an RNA dependent RNA polymerase. But this is the polymerase in brown. And there's some accessory protein shown, but not all of them for sure. But what's happening here is that the RNA, the DNA template is coming in a channel in the polymerase. The strands are separated and then the single strand runs by the, uh, active site. Actually, the, the, the DNA is coming in, uh, from the right here and the, um, the RNA is polymerized in the active site. And there's the RNA, which is shown in red. They don't use our conventions. Uh, and then the, uh, the RNA, there's an RNA exit channel. And there's the active site, the NTPs come in through another channel. Some of this should be familiar to you from our discussion of RNA polymerases last week. So that's what's happening inside this molecule. These structures, by the way, are all known. So let me show you about these enhancers and silencers that can work to regulate transcription up to ten thousand, uh, base pairs away. Here's an example of an enhancer. So there is our mRNA start site, the red, and underneath it, you can see the initiator sequence. And here the RNA polymerase complex is bound, the pol two and brown and all the accessory proteins. And this is an, an enhancer sequence, which can be very far away, as you see. What happens is the DNA is folding back and there are proteins called enhancer binder, binding proteins that, uh, bind the enhancer sequence, which is shown in orange, and they can also bind one or more proteins in the polymerase. Here they're shown interacting with TF2D. And what they do is they stabilize the polymerase complex and they enhance initiation. If you delete these enhancer binding regions for certain promoters, transcription goes down. So it's a way to enhance it. There are also silencers where instead of an enhancer, the, the interaction with the proteins, which would help to cut down the amount of RNA synthesis.
This image is on page two oh seven of the book. And you know, he, he's explaining it and I don't mean to cut it, cut, cut the wisdom right there as he's explaining it. But, um, basically when he's talking about the TF2D, we mentioned that before in regards to where it's located. But in his diagram, it's basically, um, the point A is, uh, the DNA looping model postulates that proteins bind to a distant enhancer, orange. Here shown upstream of the gene. Remember, we see that U when we were dealing with the, the sequencing. All right. Interact diff, uh, directly with the components of the transcription initiation complex with the intervening DNA loop out. Such interactions might stabilize the initiation complex and therefore stimulate transcription. B, right? You, uh, well, you, you can't see B, but, uh, it's an enhancer now conveniently linked to a promoter with the protein bridge is functional. When present to the, uh, the five inch side, uh, usually termed upstream um, of the rabid B globin gene promoter in a circular plasmid. This, uh, simian virus or the SV forty enhancer stimulates specific transcriptions in vitro by a factor of a hundred. In the experiment summarized here, the enhancer and promoter were separated by restriction endocloysis cleavage. Under this condition, the enhancer cannot stimulate transcription. Uh, biotin was added to the ends of each DNA, uh, fragment by incorporation of biotenolated UTP. So there you go.
It's made, so it can go either way, but that's how they work at a distance. Uh, now, so there, there are many proteins that regulate transcription. We've, we've talked about proteins that bind DNA. So there are a whole host of host, there are many host sequence specific DNA binding proteins. I showed you some examples of them. But there are also virus sequence specific DNA binding proteins. Some of the viruses with larger genomes actually encode proteins that can regulate transcription because it needs to be done differently in a virus infected cell from an unaffected cell. All right. So a whole, whole lot of these sequence specific DNA binding proteins, and I've showed you on the pictures, DNA sequences, different colors that bind to specific protein. So in other words, the protein recognizes a very specific DNA sequence and can bind to it. There are also a series of molecules involved in regulating transcription that do not bind DNA, but they can still regulate transcription. These are called co- co-activating molecules. Now, the, the cell has these as well, but viruses often encode them. And the way they work typically, or many of them, not all of them, they modulate the structure of what, what I'm calling nucleosomal templates. So here is what I mean by that. This is DNA wrapped around nucleosomes. These cakes are nucleosomes made up of proteins, including histones. And they give the DNA a structure, they compact it, but they also regulate transcription. And so these proteins, these histones in the cake can be methylated. In other words, a CH three group can be added. It can be acetylated and acetyl group can be added. And that regulates transcription. And I'm going to show you how that happens, uh, in a bit. Now, these sequence, so those are two kinds of proteins that regulate transcriptions. There are one that bind DNA and then there are others that modify histones to make the chromatin or the DNA more or less accessible to the enzymes for transcription. And so the ones, the proteins that bind DNA have a modular organization. In other words, sequence specific transcriptional activators, the proteins that bind DNA and regulate transcription. They can have a modular, they have a modular organization. So here's a schematic of a protein. The N terminus and the C terminus, these are chemically defined. There's an amino group at the C ter- N terminus and a COOH group at the C terminus. And the modules are shown in different colors. There's a DNA binding domain as a specific kind of protein or amino acid sequence that allows DNA binding. This could be any, it could be a zinc finger where certain amino acids, histidines coordinate a zinc molecule and that is good for binding DNA. It could be elixter, elixir, it could be a basic sequence. The point here is that this sequence can bind DNA and you need that, of course, because this is going to bind the, the DNA, which is going to be transcribed. Then you have a part of the protein that is involved in dimer formation. Most of these activators work as dimers. And so, uh, you, you have two proteins and often what's called a lucene zipper is involved in allowing two proteins to interact. It's a great name, right? It's a series of lucenes which allow two proteins to stick to each other. And it's a zipper, right? Can zip it or unzip it. Scientists can have creativity. And then there's an activation domain, which will probably interact with some part of the polymerase complex to help activate transcription. And in the middle is a nuclear localization sequence, which we abbreviate as NLS. You need that because these proteins are made in the cytosol. All proteins are made in the cytosol. They have to be shipped in the nucleus to participate in transcription. So they need a nuclear localization signal. As we talked about before, proteins don't just diffuse into the nucleus. They're actively transported in by a series of proteins and through a nuclear pore complex. And you need a signal called an NLS in order to get in the nucleus. It's like a ticket. It's like a vaccine passport to get in the nucleus. Someone's asking, what's the relationship between nucleosomes and chromosomes? So chromosomes are big, they're made up of many, many nucleosomes with the DNA wrapped around it. So a nucleosome is a subpart of a chromosome. Time for
All right. So he's going with a quiz right here. So I want to go back to, uh, what he was talking about just a moment ago, uh, regarding properties of proteins that regulate transcription. Um, and the last image that I used, says, uh, cellular sequence specific transcriptional regulators play pivotal roles in expression of viral genes. However, the genomes of many viruses also encode additionally regulatory proteins. The cellular and viral DNA binding proteins necessary for transcription from viral DNA templates share a number of common properties. Their most characteristic feature is modulator organization. They are built from discrete structure, uh, structural and functional domains. The basic modules are a DNA binding domain and an activation domain, which functions as an independent unit. Uh, other common properties include binding to DNA as dimmers as shown in the figure that he just showed. So his first question is, what is the first biosynthetic event that occurs in a cells infected with DSDNA viruses? Is it membrane fusion, transcription, DNA replication, protein synthesis, or all the above? Remember, we had mentioned this earlier before. What are we dealing with? Put your answer in the chat. Is your answer A, membrane infusion? Is your answer B, transcription? Is your answer C, DNA replication? Is your answer D, protein synthesis? Is your answer E, all the above? I'm gonna give you like forty-five seconds. Thirty seconds remain. We didn't ran Richard off. He didn't do. Somebody else must be live. We only got one answer in the chat. Anusha, why, why did you select B? It looked like you're gonna be the only one answering. So what made you select B? All right. It looked like nobody else answered. Fifteen seconds. What's your answer, Richie? I'm gonna wait to see what Richie say. And then, uh, we'll get into, we'll talk about it. It's on the screen right now. It's, uh, the question is, what is the first biosynthetic event that occurs in cells infected with DSDNA viruses? Richie says B. Peace to, uh, to brother Jeremy. If you know the answer to the question, uh, on the screen, brother Jeremy, I'mma, I'mma give you like twenty, twenty more seconds to answer. Richie said he's not sure if it's, okay. That's fine, bro. We, we are learning. So it doesn't, it doesn't matter if you, you know what I mean? So the answer is, the answer is, uh, I'll go ahead and give it to y'all. The answer is B. Uh, because transcription is the first viral biosynthetic reaction following infection of cells by double stranded DNA viruses. Remember, what is the first biosynthetic event that occurs in cells infected with DSDNA viruses? Transcription. So let's elaborate a little bit more on that. During the infectious cycle of viruses with DNA genomes, viral messenger RNA synthesis must precede production of proteins. In most cases, this step is accomplished by the wholesale enzyme that produces cellular mRNA. RNA polymerase two. This enzyme also transcribes the, uh, the pro-viral DNA of retroviruses. The signals that control expression of the genes of these viruses are similar to those of cellular genes. In fact, the study of viral DNA templates was crucial for identification of cellular transcription proteins and elucidation of mechanisms of transcription. In contrast, viral RNA polymerase transcribe the largest DNA genomes of viruses that replicate the cytoplasm, such as pox virus, but these enzymes resemble their wholesale counterparts in several respect. To form a template suitable for transcription, gap double stranded or single stranded DNA genomes are converted to double stranded DNA molecules by cellular enzyme. Retroviral RNA genomes are converted to double stranded pro-viral DNA that is integrated into cellular genomes by viral enzymes. We're talking about transcription. Yeah, you get that. You got the answer right, but your explanation was incorrect. Transcription again is the first viral biosynthetic reaction following infection of cells by double stranded DNA. So he goes over the answer here, but he's answering a bunch of, he puts up the quiz, does some talking, and then he provides the answer to the question. And the answer, I'mma go ahead and give it to you is B. B. Now, all those other things transpire, but in different aspects, but the question is asked, what was the first? What is the first biosynthetic event? So if Zane, if you're watching, I doubt Unc is watching. But when this question was posed live, following him live, it was so confusing because we didn't slow it down. It wasn't slowed down for us. It was in the moment. And as you can see, seventy-one percent of the class, and there was sixty-six people that answered, but there was over a hundred and seventy-something people in the class. Seventy-one percent got it right. Some people say all the above. Some people say membrane fusion, but nobody really paid attention to it. Well, seventy-one percent of the class paid attention to the word first biosynthetic event. Now, I'm gonna stop right here at this moment because I don't want to make the video long and drawn out. But he also has study questions for lecture seven, which is what we're dealing with. These questions are intended to summarize key points for the session. It says, look, what is the first biosynthetic event that must take place after viral SSDNA enters the cell? He names all these other ones. He does all of this. What, but it's more extended than how he summarized this question. What mu- uh, what must this be the first event? Where does this event take place? We just answered it. We just answered it, right? And I, and I gave you the, and I gave you the answer of, uh, where it takes place. Transcription is the first viral biosynthetic reaction following infection of cells by double stranded DNA viruses. Question two, describe the individual steps that take place during the production and processing of MRNAs. See what we going here? We, we should be able to deal with the, with these questions now. Coming up, we've answered one question. We answered one question. That, that question is transcription, which would be B. And nobody working today, bro. Why does he keep calling my phone for? See? What is the first biosynthetic event that occurs in, in, in cells infected with, uh, DSDNA viruses? B, transcription. All right. So what we're gonna do here is stop sharing. Give me a second here. I want to pull up some stuff for y'all. I want to kind of, um, let the lecture breathe, but I want to leave y'all with some, um, useful information. There was a conversation that was had on the pseudo killers. I wanna say maybe, I don't know Cedric and I was, well, they were on there talking about uh endemic, everybody remember the endemic conversation that was on the pseudo killers, right? And brother Cedric was like, went down the endemic and blah, 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 and I was like, nah, we're not there yet. And you know, then we were pretty much having a conversation centered around that whole notion of the endemic, so. I wanna go over an article that was written and published today that says, how you'll know when COVID nineteen is gone from a pandemic to an endemic. It's a clear indicator that we're still in a pandemic. Alright, so you can see it on the screen right here. It's more subjective than you might think. It says, you probably heard it by now, COVID nineteen is not going away. The broad consensus amongst experts is that not, it's not a realist, realistic to think that we're going to totally eradicate this virus. We will, however, see it move out of the pandemic phase and into an endemic phase. That means the virus will keep circulating in parts of the global population for years, but its prevalence and impact will come down to relatively manageable levels, so it becomes more like the flu than a world stopping disease. For now, we have to remember that we are still in the pandemic with the virus. Says Gene Kate's Director of Global Health and HIV Policy for Kaiser Family Foundation, which is KFF, which is uh some, they got good data. Uh we're not yet at a point where we're living in the endemic COVID. When we get to that point, some of this will be much easier, but we're not there. So how will we know when we are there? Is there some clear threshold or some magical metric that will tell us objectively and undeniably yes and no? For an infectious disease to be classed in the endemic phase, the rate of infection has to, has to more or less stabilize across years, though occasionally increased, say in the winter, are expected. A disease in the endemic, if the reproductive number is stable at one, that means one infected person on average infects one other person, explained Boston University's epidemiologist Eleanor Murray. Right now, we are nowhere near that. Each person who's infected is infecting more than one person. This is why the push for being vaccinated. You see what I'm saying? The push for being vaccinated is so intense. You know, there are mandates that are out there and things of that nature, I know it sounds like a negative thing, but however, to push this pandemic into an endemic phase to where people are no longer infecting are not five or five people when they walk in a room, or nine people when they walk in a room and we get it down to just a person, that means we have more people protected against the novel virus, and now we have things under control. That would be better because when you get it to a endemic, we can do what? We really can start to remove our masks, and we'll have more protection, and it'll be less breakthroughs, it'll be less all kind of other things that'll transpire, we, we really could get back to handle our business as usual. Resume and flight travels and the whole nine yards. Now, that's largely due to hyper contagious Delta variant and the fact that most of the global population doesn't yet have immunity. You have to remember, those naturally infected people, thirty six percent of the naturally infected people, so let's just say you got forty million people infected, right? Fifty percent of that is twenty million people. Okay? Twenty, half of that, half of that, which would be twenty five percent would be ten million people. Right? Then you gotta go up about five million, so about fif- about thirteen to fifteen million, or thirteen is sixteen or seventeen million people. I'mma say uh thirteen to fifteen, so between thirteen and fifteen million people aren't gaining any type of immunity. They're being reinfected, and they still ain't gaining no type of immunity. They're not having a severe reaction. People who have a more severe reaction have better protection against reinfection. So rather through vaccination or infection, so sus- uh susceptibility is still high. For a while, there had been a hope that the arrival of vaccines would mean we could reach herd immunity, that is, when enough of the population has gained immunity to confer protection to everyone, but those hopes have been dashed as we fail to vaccinate enough people and more contagious variants have circulated wildly. But getting the virus, the virus's reproductive number down to one is just the bare minimum for earning the endemic classification, Murray said. There are other factors that come into play too, and assessing these factors is more subjective business. In general, viruses become endemic when we, health experts, governmental bodies, and the public collectively decide that we're okay with accepting the level of impact the virus has. And obviously, that's a tricky thing. People will defer as to what constitutes as acceptable level. So we can just all say, you know what? Let's all unmask. Let's all convene. Let's all fly everywhere, no mask, none of that, let's, let everybody just go back to no social distancing, none of that, don't wash your hands, who cares? Go out there, survive it or not. We can all just throw our hands up. Who cares if you got the vaccine? If you live through it or if you die, oh well. If the death rate goes to a million plus, oh well. People die every day, B. We can have that attitude. We can lose our elderly, we can lose the five point five million immunocompromised people. We can lose them. Oh well. We don't care, we just, we don't care, we wanna go back to our normal lives, we don't want any mandates, we don't wanna wear masks, we don't wanna social distance. You wanna stand right behind me in a freaking line at Walmart? Breathe all down, cough all over the place? You wanna do all of those things? Because it's your choice. Is, you feel like it's your right? To spread your infectious disease contaminated having behind to all of us who don't want that stuff. It's your right. So the multiple factors that determine when a disease is endemic, the worst outcomes from becoming infected with a virus is obviously death. The worst outcome from becoming infected with a virus is obviously death. The flu, for example, kills between twelve to fifty two million, uh fifty two thousand Americans each year, according to the CDC. Is that figure acceptable or too high? I still feel like that's too high. The way I think about it, even with influenza, that's too much. Uh Joshua Petrie, an epidemiologist at Michigan School of Public Health said. But as in a, but as a society, we've imp- uh implicitly, well, I can't even say that word, implicitly declined that we will accept the level of mortality rather than taking measures to lower it by say, wearing masks in the winter or mandating flu vaccines. You see that? You see that? We don't care if fifty two thousand people die from the flu. We don't care. We don't wanna mandate vaccine. Now, similar with COVID nineteen, people would disagree about the uh what constitutes as acceptable level of mortality. See, it's only when your people begin to start dying that it really matters. Remember, when the, when the funk is at your doorstep, that is when you're the most concerned. Until the funk is at your doorstep, you're the least bit of concerned. But the moment is knocking on your door, then you care. Just like cancer. Like, people, people really don't be too much health conscious and watch what they eat until people get ca- I'm, I'm saying this from experience because soon as my uncle or my cousins or something been diagnosed with a cancer or something like that, the first thing they said was, where you get your food, where you get your water, what kind of stuff you eat? Everybody started asking me about the, the way I be eating. But when I was eating the way I was eating, you know what I'm saying, they, they looked at me like I was crazy. But when I seen that too much fast food and too much of anything like that around those lines was too consuming on the body and it doesn't, does well for us, and I started backing away from that because I ain't wanna, I ain't wanna be the next person to be diagnosed with that stuff, not saying that you can, you know, get around certain things and normally it's usually in the food, no, it's many ways, but that was one of my, my avenues of becoming health conscious to prev- prevent me from, you know what I'm saying? Being in that realm. But I'mma continue. I'm not prepared to say what the appropriate benchmark is yet, but it is certainly is much, much lower than where we are. Remember, there's fifteen hundred people dying a day from COVID nineteen, and we have a vaccine that can prevent death. So you do the math. Fifteen hundred, this is an average. Let's just do thirty days in a month. There's forty five thousand people dying a day. And we have a vaccine. We can easily cut that down to ten thousand or five thousand or one thousand because we have a vaccine. You hear that, Richard? Because we have a vaccine that prevents death. So here uh Dr. Murray. Because pandemics don't end by a disease just fading away, and pandemics don't end where everyone able to completely forget about the disease. Pandemics end when we decide how much death and disease we're satisfied with. This was gonna be my Facebook post. I was just gonna copy it right here and lay it down right there. I don't know about, oh, I ain't got no dang on Twitter. I don't know about, I don't know about you, but for me, this is too much death. Coronavirus map here. Look at that. The tweet. It's too much death. So let's continue. Mortality isn't the only type of impact we need to take seriously. COVID nineteen can lead to long haul symptoms in a minority of cases. Estimates range from ten to thirty percent in unvaccinated people, with a smaller number of vaccinated people also affected. The symptoms like brain fog, memory loss, fatigue, something so deliberating that the conditions is recognized as a disability under the Americans with Disabilities Act. The reasons why some people get long COVID and others recover quickly are still not well understood, and the path to affect treatments for long haulers is uncertain. In determining uh endemic, endemic city, Murray said she looked at the availability of treatments for long haulers as well as treatments for people in the early stages of the disease like Merck's pill, uh Mal- Mallow Paravir, which the pharma giant said cuts hospitalizations in half at risk patients. Looks like it'll be helpful in this regard. She also considered other factors like ICU and hospital bed capacity, supply chain issues, and whether a use of medications for COVID is detracting from the supply of those medications for other chronic conditions that they've normally be treated. What you wanna get in uh, get to a stage where you don't have to worry about disruption because of COVID. The pandemic is over when the crisis stopped, not just when we get to a certain death level. Again, though, determining when something stops being a crisis can be a bit subjective. There's one imminent development that makes Murray hopeful about the pandemic phase winding down in the US by twenty twenty two. Vaccines for five-year-olds to eleven-year-olds are expected to be approved within weeks. I think once we get the vaccines approved for them, a lot more people hopefully about the control situation in the US, she said, vaccinating schools, uh school-going kids is crucial, both because it'll protect them and because it'll limit spread in the community. Will we get an official declaration saying that the state emergency is over? In March twenty twenty, who declared a novel coronavirus pandemic soon after the US government declared a national emergency? Then one by one states follow suit. As we move toward endemic uh endemic city, we, endemic city, we will expect to watch this process happen in reverse, experts told me. Firstly, we'll likely see individual states declaring an end to emergency, some states already have. This will be staggered. Some areas, notably those with high vaccination rates, will reach a reasonable approximation of endemic city sooner than others. On a national level, the CDC may pull back our state of emergency in the US if cases remain low at some point in the future. Uh Tara Smith, an epidemiologist at Kent State said, notice, when we get information like this about how the spread of the disease transpires and who's being infected and how they're tracking things, I've said this before, you need to have an understanding of what epidemiologists do. This is, this whole thing about pandemic and endemic epidemiologists, the spread of the infectious disease epidemiologists, how many people are infected epidemiologists. Alright, so let's continue. Uh but we still have a long way to go in controlling the virus in the globe, she, she added. A pandemic by nature is global, and while we're doing better in the US and other wealthy countries, vaccine availability in many lower and middle income countries have been atrocious. The WHO will eventually declare an end to the global pandemic, just like it's done in the past for say, the H one N one swine flu pandemic. You just shouldn't expect to hear the WHO's declaration anytime soon. Alright, so uh to wrap, wrap up the article, cuz you know, few minutes long, and of course, I didn't extended it out. But um, but that doesn't mean you can't move forward with your life in the meantime. If you live in the US, it's certainly possible. Your region will reasonably class as being the endemic phase in twenty twenty two, Petrie said. When the time comes, your state health department and local officials will likely make an announcement based partly on the virus's objective reproductive number and partly on the more subjective criteria above. And until then, rather than thinking of an endemic as an on and off switch next year, plan to think of it as a demo switch, Petrie told me. He plans to keep an eye on the CDC's county data tracker to monitor local transmission levels. When his county is no longer in the red zone, he will start to feel more comfortable doing more public activities. We all have different levels of risk tolerance, so for a while yet, we'll be making our own subjective choices about which threshold feels safe enough. As we're transitioning to a more of an endemic level, he said, I think adjusting your behavior based on what's happening locally makes a lot of sense. Great article, great article. And now, I didn't share this with the pseudo killers. I ain't talked to none of them about it, nope, if you're asking. I kinda wanted to bring it to y'all right here on Science with Sean. You know what I'm saying? Can't give all, can't give all your stuff away. But Dr. Murray hit it on the head. Because pandemics don't end by a disease just fading away, and pandemics don't end where everyone able to completely forget about the disease. Pandemics end when we decide how much death and disease we're satisfied with. How much death and disease are you satisfied with? So again, Richard, cuz I know you unvaccinated. If it require, if your daughter required you being vaccinated in order for her to live, if, if you had a daughter or son, if your child required you being vaccinated for them to live because they're immunocompromised, and they can't gain protection the way that you could, but you could build a force field to ride your child to protect them and, and extend their life, would you get vaccinated then? And on that note, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to thank everybody for tuning in to Science with Sean. Like the show, share the show, tell a friend, tell a friend. I appreciate everybody uh spending this time with I appreciate everybody, uh, spending this time with me. Um, again, we will continue the rest of the video and we will break it down in parts and walk through the video as expected. As the class, before Monday, we will have this broke down. So when we transition into our new class on Monday, uh, for everybody that, that is in the class with me, we will make sure that we're prepared. We will make sure that we're prepared. Uh, remember, uh, to cop the book, What SARS-CoV-2 Taught Me? Um, it's out now, been out. A lot of people have already copied it. A lot of people have, uh, began to read the book. Which is pretty dope and I've been getting a lot of feedback in regards to it and, and a lot of praise and applause for my contribution to the community with this particular text. However, most people don't have the book yet. Some people have been getting them days in and days out, but most people don't have the book yet. So get the book, man. Let's have a conversation centered around a book in the future, but get the book. The book is there for you to have. Get the book, man. Same tree, different branch, publishing dot com. Get your, get your copy of What SARS-CoV-2 Taught Me and let's build.